From St. Paul's to come give the invocation.
Let us pray. Holy God, we give you thanks for all the good things that you continually give us. You have entrusted each person in this room with responsibilities for the village that we live in, and we come before you tonight to do the business of this village. Each of us comes from different situations. Some have had full days of exhausting work already. Some come with worries, some come with health issues, and some come with fresh energy and good ideas. Although we have varied experiences, we are here to work together, and so we ask you to guide our conversations. Help us listen fully, help us to speak truth clearly, permitting the business to be accomplished smoothly. As you brought us safely to this place, allow us to travel back home, allow us to travel back to our homes tonight safely. We pray all of these things in your holy name. Amen.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray, here.
Holston.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Up.
Here.
Gracy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Peggy. And just on a side note, I'll just briefly mention this. Reuben has been doing a phenomenal job of bringing together the ministers in the area along with, we got different ones. Barb's been attending the chamber congress meetings, so it's nice to see staff connecting with the various groups within the community. So this time we have open to the public. Agenda items online, please let me make comments in three minutes. Come to the voting, give your name and address, please. Okay. Next, letter D, consent agenda. I'm taking a motion to approve the consent agenda. So.
Second.
Trey Horn and Holston.
We'll call you later, Mr. Mr. Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Gracy.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Okay, court's report.
I have no report, you're right.
Okay. The minister is report.
Mr. Mayor, before I get into the items on the agenda, I just wanted to bring forth board two items. One is just a notification that Frankfurt is considering limits on the medical pot sales. And if the board is interested in at some point, I'd like to refer that to the P and Z. Referring that to the P and Z for some potential governance on that. They would be open to that, just speaking with Chairman Rose.
Could you not say whether there's refereeing or roughering? That's right.
And item number two is everyone should have been, should have received a notice regarding the Condon Group. They have now combined with Whipley. That's W Y P F L I L L P. We've been assured that we should see no change in service or the services at. That brings me to item number F1 on my agenda. The inspector rates, and at this point, I would ask Jim Smith, our building department manager, to step forward and make the presentation regarding this.
Good evening. Our proposal here is that our inspectors, our contract, our contracted inspectors are asking for a $5 raise per inspection. And our ordinance that covers the fees that we charge residents and businesses for building permit inspections is way too low to cover those costs. So this packet that I put together for you, the first page is a projection of 2014. I don't think I have to read it. The second page is what we did in 2013. The number of inspections, excuse me, and the, what it had cost us in 2013. Third page is a summary of some of the inspectors that I have reached out to in other communities. This is, these are the rates that they are charging their communities for inspection fees. Generally, it's going from $40 to $50 per inspection. Currently, we are only charging our residents $30. I've attached the ordinance that spells out this. This is ordinance number 1539. And I've highlighted all of those items where we are charging $30 per inspection. If our inspectors ask for a $5 raise, we'll be losing money this year. So that's my proposal. Any questions?
Any questions, any suggestions?
Excuse me, Mr. Smith, have you surveyed other villages to see what they're paying the inspectors?
Yes. Yes, this is, this is on page three.
Right. I just, I read it, I wanted to tell it to the public.
Other villages are paying anywhere from, again, $40 to $50 per inspection. It's for the contracted inspectors that they have. The in-house inspectors, those rates are set within their building permit fee, and they simply get an hourly rate like, like the rest of us. But if there are some companies out there that strictly do inspections and peatone contracts from them, one of those companies specifically, and their rates are so kind of low that it's hard to understand in layman's terms how they, how they operate. It's, it's, it depends on the type of inspection, the square footages that they inspect, and so on and so forth. And they also include travel times along with that.
Have you or Darrell got a break-even point that you recommend for this, at this point?
I have not talked to Darrell on this. I've only kind of looked at what we have in place and what the fees are going to be. I also know that, if I could throw this in, I also know that these inspectors that we have been using for a number of years now, one of them has been with us almost seven years and has never asked for a raise. So he's been, he's been doing all the inspections for seven years, nearly seven years, for $30 per inspection. He's asking for $5 this year. I don't think that's out of line. Our plumbing inspectors are, we have two. One we use exclusively and the other one's fulfilling. And he's currently at $35 per inspection. So we've been losing money a little bit on him every time we call upon him. And he's also asking for a $5 raise, which would take him to $40. But the plumbing inspectors are both through a more rigorous training and licensing process with the state of Illinois than the other inspectors. So rightly so, he's probably a little bit more high-priced.
Jim.
Yes.
I noticed on here, like Mattson charges a different rate for the commercial inspections than the residential?
They do, they do. They're, just because of the, the complexity of an inspection for a commercial property, if it was new or, or a remodel, electrical is more involved, plumbing's more involved. It's just a little more, a little different thing.
So is that something?
We do not, we do not do that at this time.
Is that something you would recommend as a consideration because of the potential for, or is that something?
Perhaps down the road, Mayor, but I, I don't think so right at this time.
Okay.
Can I ask you? I have just got a question. On these numbers that you have in here, outlining from A all the way, or A all the way through G, you have prices in here with then a plus 30 highlighted as P plus PR 30.
Yes.
So the general then for each one, so if a roofing, if we're doing an overlay, a person will need to get one permit for $80, one inspection.
Right.
So 50, what's the 50 plus?
The 50 is an administration cost for us, you know, internally. And then the one $30 is for an inspection fee.
Well, and this is presently?
This is what's in the ordinance right now, yes.
This is the ordinance?
This is the ordinance, yes.
This is your proposed new ordinance?
No, this is the old one. This is the old one. This is what is in place right now. My opinion is I'd say, I would say bump it up. I mean, I know a lot of people are 50, and we've been at 30 for four years. I don't see, shoot, my opinion again, is go on to 40. To bump it up again, it's the way, the way things are, nothing is, everything is raised. And like you said, we're gonna, we have the potential of losing money, and that's not what the board is here to do, is lose money. We're at least trying to stay ahead of the game. So my, my opinion is we go off to $40. We fall out, remember things in the past, but we haven't gone crazy. I mean, it states right here, Jim, you didn't, you didn't want to go that high. What is it here? Some of the villages are as high.
60 to 100.
60 to 100 on commercial properties, yes. And you work from 50 to 100 in certain, in certain places. Right.
National Creed actually pays out their inspectors' fees. That is each.
Yeah. We go that crazy high, but we do need to, I believe we need to bump it up. And again, this is then.
This is the whole.
Yeah. Almost four years, July 2010, so.
So would you, would you, based on the fact that plumbing rates are higher, you want to concede to a 45 for plumbing and a 40 for anything else? Is that, is that relevant, just because plumbing has a higher cost of?
If, if we want to put language into the revised ordinance to cover plumbing inspections at a different rate, that would be fine. I guess that would be up to our attorney, but.
And then?
I think at $40, if we decide to raise it to $40, we are covered now until our next, the next time our inspector asks.
If we lose that inspector, then we get stuck with one from Creed that charges us $50. Then we have to.
And we'll have to go through this exercise again.
All right, you can answer.
No, I understand, I'm saying that I also.
We don't want to be out of our residents for taking care of property.
Like you said, looking at the future, you know, right now plumbing inspector, we really don't use that often. Correct, there's more building. In 2013, we did.
53.
53 plumbing inspections.
General building, electrical was 70. So what is our cost for a plumber, a plumbing inspector, and sorry, $40?
It's going to be $40, correct?
That's our cost, yes. And Darrell, that's a direct payout, there's no taxes taken out, so that's, that's our raw cost on it. I can't imagine us doing anything less than what we're actually being billed directly for any inspector. So whatever the cap is on any of them, I'd say that would be a good threshold. And at such time, if there's an adjustment that gets made, then we're going to have to bring it back for renegotiating on that. Do you want to consider though, because it is a little more intricate with the commercial properties, do you want to consider a $10 or $20? I mean, Mattson Hall's not quite double, but it's quite a bit higher for the commercial. You want, I, it's just up to you guys. I mean, just make this straight, flat regardless of commercial or residential? Or you want to charge a little bit extra for commercial?
My view would be, let's keep it straight right now, where I think you, you just turned your last meeting and split it here. I don't think we need to do that right now.
That's fine, that's fine. Just want to get a good consensus on it. So do we have a motion from trustee Gray to?
All about $40.
Fly rate $40 on all inspections? So just, just to amend the current ordinance to, okay, so we have a motion to amend the current ordinance to the, the inspector rate to $40 across the board. Not, not change any administrative costs or anything else. And second by trustee Gracy? Okay, roll call on that, please.
Okay, can we discuss yet?
Absolutely, sure.
You mentioned it, it would cost us money if we didn't increase.
We've already made out more.
Absolutely, we take. And financially, you feel the $40 will at least break even or give us a slight income?
Yes. Just to clarify, we do charge a larger administration rate on commercial properties, on a building permit than we do on a residential.
Okay.
So we are somewhat covered if it's, you know, a little bit more.
Much more of a charge.
Quite a bit. It's, it's actually, it's actually in this ordinance. You can just read down what we can charge on the, yup. Commercial properties, we're at $300. We're at $100 on the other. So to read through it, it tells you electrical inspections, residential's only 85 plus the inspection, and on the commercials, 300, so.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have any more discussion on the vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Gracy.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item F2 on the agenda is a board action request for sound study proposal. This has to do with property located to the north of Lakeway Drive residence, commonly known as the Michelin Building. We've been in, in negotiations with the homeowners along Lakeway Drive, as well as the property owner, a person representing the property owner of that building. And the agreement has come down to having another sound study with the receptors placed at different areas, two of which include the upper elevations of the residential units, as well as on top of the fence line, as opposed to where the receptors were placed in previous study. Additionally, the cost has been agreed to be split between the village and the property owners. The commercial property owner has committed to do that. And should this study move forward, his condition of, of participation was based upon a sign-off of the residents that, that will accept the, the results of the study as it comes in. So what you have before you is a proposal from the same group acoustic by design who prepared the previous study that was done. The amount of that proposal is $6,950. And I did contact the property owner, representative of the property owner for the property to the east, and that would be where Jacobson is housed. And did not, that was not received very well at all. The likelihood of participation there is almost nil at this point. So what we have before the board today is authorization to, if they so choose, to enter into this, to this sound study and to split the cost as it would be with the property owner of the Michelin Building, which is High Street Equities, if I'm not mistaken, and move this, move this issue along the road. Happy to take any questions?
I have a couple of questions here, and just reviewing the layout of this. I want to confirm, because I know we've got a couple of residents here that represent the neighboring properties. I'm looking on here and I'm seeing where they stipulated on item two. One second. About the 48-hour study. They identified four locations. And it says on the second floor deck of residences selected by you. That's not four locations on the second floor deck though, that's?
That is correct, it is not. It's, the intent is to put one receptor on each of the decks and one or two receptors on the fence line at the fence height elevation. The previous study went, yes, went behind the fence line. And I believe that was the discussion that was had at the, at the meeting with the residents and the commercial property owner as well.
If, if, do either of you care to come forward and reaffirm that you're in agreement with this as a?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine. One on each house, one on each house and one on the top of the fence in two different areas. That's correct, I mean, and we've been talking with.
I think we were talking about the elevation of the fence, but I don't think it was actually on the fence, but that's.
For the record, it's the depth by who it is, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead and give your name for the.
Oh, John Marisack, 6512 Lakeway Drive.
I noticed, yes, go ahead, Jim.
To my recollection.
Yes, sir.
We've already had three studies, am I correct?
There was one that was, I'll clarify. I got a thing, is that one we couldn't find a copy of? It was not in our records.
But we also are doing, we're talking about the possibility of doing it fourth with the same company that did the third. Is that company saying they did something wrong? This, this is at a point to me.
That is not, that is.
While we finish, this is at a point to me where we want industry to move in this community. I would call this a little bit of harassment to this point. We're doing a fourth one for the same reason.
And I know we had a discussion at the, at the board at the time when that study came in, and there was debate over whether or not the measurements down low, and I think even the sound engineers acknowledge it, that when you do it behind a berm or something like that down low, it's not going to have the same measurements as where it might be impacted.
I understand all that, but they need to state requirements of the state of Illinois. What I understood from our discussion, it could even be a year ago, six months, I don't know. And I, I'm just having a little feeling for future industrial people coming in and, you know, the word spreads.
Hundred percent.
This doesn't help us in the village. It should, it should have been rectified. That's three studies.
I have a question, I just. I'm Lakeview, I'm not familiar with the, with the street, Lakeway, I'm sorry. How many residents are homes are on that street? Ballpark.
Well. Well, the street goes from Lakeway to Lakeview.
Okay.
So there's one, two, three, four, five, and then it turns to Lakeview.
So potentially there's ballpark, then could be affected by this.
Eighteen, eighteen lots.
There's eighteen lots.
Some properties are currently vacant there.
Okay, okay. And again, what trustee Pop said, going back to this, we've got yourself and, you know, two, two homes that have brought this back up. At the time, trustee Holstead, who I believe works for Michelin, has sat down with us and said, he has come out there and sat at night in his car and listened for the sound. Because at that time, he was just, he was a businessman who did listen to the concerns, but didn't feel that the sound study was necessarily going to went along. And again, just like trustee Pop said, the sound study came back and said they were no negligence. Now we're back to this up to eight months ago. And I'm in total agreement here that I just don't feel that we need to be doing another sound study that you split it three ways, two ways, one way. It's another $7,000. And split it up, it could be another $4,000 that the village is being asked to shell out, and we just cut out $10,000 for a market study.
If I can make a comment?
Sure. Yeah, before you do, let me just ask one question here as a typical here. Can the, if this were approved, this doesn't necessarily have to come out of the general fund, it could come out of the TIF funds, because it applies to that TIF district that has caused the impact on neighboring residential. I just want to clarify that. So it's not necessarily affecting the general fund, but proceed.
Okay, if I could, for the record, first of all, there is a, I am the general manager of the facility, which is ran by UTI, which I've worked for UTI. Michelin is our customer, High Street is the owner of the bill. Mr. Wallace, if you could confirm for me that over the period you've been involved with this, anytime you've asked for something from the owner or from UTI, you can receive full cooperation?
Absolutely.
Okay.
As I like, going out and.
Correct. I want to make clear that we, yes, we have been working with the residents for a number of years and will continue to work with them as long as we're in the property. I also want to make clear that I'm not speaking on behalf of the company or the owner at this point. They have instructed me not to speak on their behalf, so I will not do that. As a trustee, I can see both sides of this. The studies that have been done previously have been done from the ground, berm level, which is my understanding of what the legal requirement is. However, the complaints that I've heard from the neighbors have been that people sleeping in the upstairs rooms have had trouble sleeping. And I can certainly respect that as a resident myself. As I understand the study, the study is going to be from the upstairs apartments or upstairs windows, excuse me if you will. So it will bring to the village and to the residents the actual information based upon the study that they have. I don't, that has not been done before, for the record, that has not been done before. I don't know that there will be a legal requirement, that, that, that that will be a legal issue. If it doesn't meet it, to be quite frank with you, because that's not the statute. However, it will at least resolve the issue once and for all. Is that noise above what is reasonable and, and expected? If it is, then that will be a separate issue that the village is going to have to face. Because quite frankly, for the record, when that facility was set up in 2004, that facility, that put that fence up per the village zone, per the village instructions, and was cleared by the village. So if it does not meet requirements, quite frankly, it's a village issue, not an issue for the owner. And the residents have every right to expect the village to, to investigate that. I don't particularly have a problem with this as a trustee. I will keep my professional comments completely separate, and I will advise you that I'll abstain from voting tonight as well. But I do think that I understand where the residents are coming from. This is the only issue that I know of left, and that is the issue of does the noise exceed the state requirements on the second level? There is no law to that effect, my interpretation, now, that's trick on the lawyer. But regardless of that, I think that's the one question that hasn't been, that hasn't been unanswered. As I understand, the cost is going to be split. I also understand, as Mr. Wallace indicated, that the owner has indicated they will pay their portion. If there is a signed agreement, they'll pay their portion. I also understand from my research that it could be taken out of the TIF funds, which might be a good use of TIF funds, because quite frankly, down the road, there's other property over there that could be developed, and that, that question needs to be resolved, in my opinion.
I have a question for you. As far as, now trustee, you, you work at the facility. The noise that we are talking about, just to refresh, we're talking, just as we were sitting here a couple weeks ago, discussing the company that wants to come in right on the other side of 57, and they're just heavy sleep, you know, guys coming in, leaving their trucks at night. I believe you're talking about, they work on trucks at night, am I correct on that?
No, they don't.
Or the banging of, what kind of noise?
Issue was refrigeration units running after hours, I believe. Venture, that was correct, correct?
Yeah, for a facility on Sunset there.
Better, oh, not better, bad, bad.
Yeah, some of the parents.
Yeah, that was, that was refrigeration.
Right, right, so the noise that we're talking about is refrigeration running in trucks at night?
Yeah, which is pretty quiet.
So that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah, this is a whole scenario.
At, at the property that we're discussing tonight.
The property we're discussing tonight has to do with the drop in trailers, which sometimes get jammed up.
The, the, trustee Gray, that the, what happens at our facility is normal process for a business of our sort, nothing out of the ordinary at all. The, the question is, is that noise buffered by the sound barrier that is there? We can't change, or nor would we change what we do, nor would anybody else do on our type of business. It's very normal noise for that kind of business. That's, in my opinion, only my opinion, I won't speak for any of the residents.
Right.
But in my opinion, the issue is, is the sound barrier there doing the job? Or does that sound barrier need to be changed? Now, if the sound barrier needs to be changed, that's going to be an issue for the village to select.
And I, I do want to stipulate that in meeting with the owner of High Street and NAI Goodman, which is the.
Property manager.
Property manager. They were both agreeable to move forward to put this to rest. And frankly, it was, it's good to get everybody at the table to, to have that discussion. UTI was not at the table, and Michelin was not at the table, because they're secondary in a sense of not having a vested interest in that location.
Well, that fences the property manager's responsibility.
Right.
And again, I have other questions, just to remind you about the noise, because I believe they're also having a, a speaker issue, like when your trucks are coming in, right? Was your house actually?
We've tried to, we've tried to commit to get that.
The, the other thing that they're looking at on here that has not been done in the past as part of the study is to make a recommendation on type of structure that may be relevant, whether a higher berm, a different type of fence. They're actually going to stipulate what may be required in order to remediate the situation, if there's truly a situation. So this will help us understand potential road cost or whatever else, because we're actually doing a sound study, correct, if this rule is right? We're actually doing a sound study to identify potential errors. a sound study to identify potential errors. We're going to do it for the purpose of also identifying potential remedies.
Right, and-
I think this last paragraph-
Just under number five there, yes. Their acoustical, acoustical recommendations are provided in the form of written reports, written partial specifications, sketches, or marked up copies of drawings. So they are going to provide a potential remedy should a situation exist that, absolutely.
So assessment.
That's what it's going to be, that since the people next door to us, the other building, owner and not participating, it'll be very difficult, potentially, to differentiate between the noise of the two facilities as to what the cause is. However, that may not be an issue if the study comes back that this is not an excessive noise.
Right, and because, and because of microphone location, if there's a microphone location that's halfway down towards the other building, the measurements there will be lower or higher than once-
To a certain degree, that's true, Mr. Mayor, but there are some other issues. I, I've sat on that street and heard truck traffic coming down the highway that was louder.
I get you.
So that's going to be difficult. However, I think we got to start with that.
Yep.
Now, if that comes back and the noise is discussed, then there's going to be public discussion and dialogue as to what the source of that is. But I think at this point, it's been a ten-year battle. This is not something that came up two years ago or three years ago, it's been a ten-year battle.
And we have to know how to mitigate industry and residents within proximity to each other, regardless of who is there first, and who, you know, whatever, all that kind of stuff. We just have to know this, if we're going to move forward and expect that we're going to not just be a sleepy town with, you know, whatever kind of a philosophy that may have been considered in the past, we're going to have to figure out how do we get business and residents to work together. And this is, I feel like this is a reasonable compromise. So our, our portion of this would be how much would potentially come out of the TIF funds?
About thirty-five hundred.
Okay. And Jacobson is not, just to clarify, the, the owners of the property for Jacobson, which would be LFI?
Yeah, the Bayland Ridge 431 property at this point is not participatory.
That the property that's in default right now? For the record? Anybody care to comment on that?
I don't know that.
I don't have the exact information.
Amazing, you don't know that?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to state on the record something that's-
That is public record.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yeah, please.
So Jacobson is non-participatory?
At this point, that is correct.
Why would they be non-participatory?
They feel that the, the sound study that was done was, met the criteria and there is no problem, and therefore they don't wish to participate in another sound study, is basically what was stated to me.
And what would be their requirement, or how would they participate in, you know, have any speakers or what have you on their property as well?
Trustee Gonzalez, if I could, a couple things. They don't have speakers at all, they don't need to, they're a different setup. But it is not Jacobson, Jacobson like us is the people who manage the business, is the owner, and the owner is a property company, LFI, that according to public records is in receivership. I don't mind saying that.
Well, and, and that's fine, I'm just, you know, stating because this predated me being here, I wondered if, if they were not participatory, if it meant that they perhaps realized too that they could be participating in the problem of that sound.
I think that the reason they're not participating is a financial.
Okay. And then secondly, we, and you stated too, I just want to clarify too, that you said that state statutes have been met or will be met by the sound study or clarified in the study, but if they still, if they are under, you know, and meet the requirements or state requirements, but the residents acknowledge that, that's still too much for them, now what happens? So, okay, if they are, if they are within guidelines of the sound, you know, sign, sound guidelines, but the residents are saying that, you know, I don't care if it, you know, it's under the guidelines.
From, from what I understand, from talking to the residents personally as well, this is the best we can do. Just to identify whether there's any responsibility on the village or the local or the property owners or whatever the case may be as to what, you know, trustee Olson has a valid point. We had agreed to through previous TIF development agreements and everything else, what the contingencies were going to be.
Okay, and then thirdly, this has been an ongoing problem. We're in agreement ten years, and we're, three sound studies in this, and we agree that there has been a problem and a dislocate with, between the, the residents and the businesses. And now trustee Halston acknowledges that it will be a village problem if, you know, if we need to correct this, you know, this berm or this wall. Has anybody looked in the last ten years, if we're going to make, do, you know, make good on this, you know, look at it before we need the sound study? Couldn't have this been done eight years ago instead of just-
Yeah, real quick, first of all, I'm not going to concede that the village is completely responsible for this, if the berm is settled or whatever else, you know, the fence was inadequate because actually it stipulated a barrier wall, and yet it settled for a fence. And I, those are things that are better off to attorneys to-
That's just twenty-nine.
But the reality is, this has been an issue that has been addressed, there was a previous owner of the property that a sound study was done and apparently failed, but because the change of ownership of the property caused it to start all over again.
Matter of public record, can you prove that?
I've seen a copy of the report.
Village report?
It was a report that was done by, I'm sorry, Mr. Marasik.
Um, Thunder and Associates, was it Tom Thunder and Associates?
Yeah.
They did fail, but the previous administration just threw it in the garbage and said-
But there's a change of ownership as well.
Well, right, there was a change of ownership in there, but they did so help.
So regardless of-
For the record, for the record, High Street is on this building since, when, when you say previous ownership-
It is not owned by High Street. Previously it's not by-
I understand that, I understand that. We should have public records, we're a village, we should have public records. If that statement is true, I'd like to make sure that is proven. I'm saying it isn't, but you've just made a, a statement that needs to be verified, and I want to verify. You said, Mr. Mayor, that-
I, I have seen a copy, but I do not have one.
I'd like to see it, Mr. Corbin.
I, just to clarify, I had asked the previous administration for a copy of it, it was never tendered that. The residents were able to show me a copy, I can ask them to provide a copy for the record. And, and that's why-
Let's make sure we make that comment, that that'll be in the records, that that's verified, please.
Fair enough.
And who was there first, frankly, the residents or?
Residents were. Right.
Yes. Residents were there first, but it was already zoned.
It was already industrial.
So it's-
No, it wasn't zoned, it was agricultural.
It was agricultural, and we bought it, it was a whole tree farm all the way out to Manhattan Moonee Road, from Ridgeland.
We can grab, you lived there, that's right.
Yeah, that was a, that was a tree farm.
That's fine.
No, no, I'm just saying, it was not, it changed in the blink of an eye.
Understood.
Yeah.
And at first sound study, the, the person that did, did come to the village-
Yeah.
And present the sound study to the village. So that should be on camera, record, whatever else, because he was here, Tom Thunder was here.
He was here.
And again, I'm not disputing it, I'm just saying this, let's-
You'd just like to see the actual-
I'd like to have a, I'd like to have a verified-
Have you no library copy of the village?
Sure, sure.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a, for clarification here, prior to the building, and please someone correct me, because I'm piecing this together, it predated myself here, but prior to the building being erected, there was a projected sound study that was conducted on-
Correct.
On the effect it would have.
But not at that location.
Yeah, well, the projected sound study was based on, was it Manuka?
Yeah, it was somewhere down south, correct.
Well-
I don't know where, but it was not projected on that property.
There was, there was a model that was used based on a similar concept in another community, and they used that as their pattern, and they did, if I, they did forecast projections from the general location, expected location of the building to a destination without the berm there, because the berm wasn't there at the time, projecting, expecting a, a diffusion of sound, et cetera, to fall over time, or distance, I should say. They stipulate as a result of that study, and frankly, going back to your question, it was based on the recommendation of that original sound study, that the determination was it would be a thirty-foot berm from the curb height of the parking lot to the, you know, to the top of the berm. Now, from what I understand, there again, I can't, I, I have been looking at these guys' bedroom windows, I haven't been in their bedroom windows, so, just to clarify. But from what I understand, at one point, when they would look out their bedroom windows, help me if I'm correct-
You didn't see the building at all.
You, you didn't used to be able to see the building because of fence, you, they'd see the fence but not the building. There's been apparently, there's, there's apparently been enough settling of the berm that now they not only see the building, they actually see, you don't see the bay doors though.
No, but you see the back of the lights that face north onto the bay doors. You know, the light poles?
Yep.
We're seeing the back of the lights now.
And you're seeing the building as well.
I've seen the building. I mean, it's hard to say, you know, looking out the window, you see three feet of building, but obviously it's more than that, you know, it's hard to-
So there has been-
There's been massive settling.
And that could, and, and that could go back on the original expectation for the berm to be as, and if that didn't maintain, because it didn't build it correctly. I, there's all sorts of variables, but the reality is, aside from all the speculations, the only way we can remedy this is to find out, how bad is it to quantify that at a nominal cost? I mean, it's still a lot of money, but the reality is, we got to put this to rest over that, you know, this is agreeable by the property owner, agreeable by the residents adjacent to it. I, I'm looking for somebody to just, you know, help us finally, now that we got everybody at the table and they're all in agreement on this, even the fact that we got the property owner, the, the High Street property is willing to pay a portion of this to resolve, this has never happened in the past either. So I think that's a good gesture on everyone's part, to, to move forward with this. So as much reservations as there may be, I believe personally, this is the only way to resolve this.
I make a motion, we approve this sound study.
Can I clarify that with the expectation that that will come out of the TIF funds?
That this funds paid for this contract come out of the TIF funds.
Sorry, second one, same here. I, I, I know trustee Olson's abstained, but anybody else want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have first by, motion by Orrin, a second by Raisik. Any discussion before we-
Still, we're in discussion.
That's, that's fine, I just, we can, we can continue with discussion, I just wanted to make sure where we're at.
Well, again, I'd like to make the point that it doesn't make any difference whether it's twelve residents or a hundred residents, all residents are important.
Absolutely.
And-
And all business is important.
I, as a trustee, as a trustee and as a person who lives in Moonee, would like to see the issue resolved as fairly as possible. The sound study may open up a huge can of worms, but we got to start with that. I have talked to the owner representative today, and what Mr. Wallace said is true, they have agreed to pay their portion, assuming that there is a signed agreement.
Okay. So based on those-
They're, they're saying they're willing to move ahead, they'd like to see it resolved too.
Agreed. Any more discussion?
Trustee Orrin?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Abstained for trustee host.
You're in full?
We have four here on it, and she will add your vote.
Yes.
I guess. And before we proceed, this will be scheduled according to weather. You cannot have any precipitation, there cannot be snow on the ground, and winds need to be at eleven miles an hour or less.
A little bit of light.
Uh, excuse me, Dave, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank everybody.
Thank you, yes.
Just, wanted to just get this over, you know, whatever the outcome is, let's just, let it be done. So, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, item F3 on my agenda is a sales tax rebate request from KKT Properties LLC, which is commonly known as Culvers. This agreement was signed on May eighth, and the agreement brings to KKT the amount of three thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. That is for sales tax collected from September, portion in September through December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. Can I answer any questions at this point?
Mr. Wallace, two things that were put down in the agreement that were asked of KKT, one was the use of village-based vendors, suppliers, and contractors. Have we been able to verify that they used any village-based vendors, suppliers, contractors?
We were not able to do that during the construction process, as that package came in with the company out of Michigan from, from-
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Just, just indicated on the list of village-based vendors, suppliers, and contractors will be forwarded to JPT, did we do that?
We did.
And we know, again, that they used any local vendors at all?
I, I, I don't know that.
I, I do know that there were local vendors that had approached them and were not, I don't know if the prices were competitive or anything else, but I do know that there were, there was a couple local vendors that had requested the opportunity to bid, weren't given that opportunity.
Second thing, hiring program, KKT, according to this, agrees to implement whatever steps necessary to encourage village residents to apply for employment. KKT shall give the utmost consideration of all qualified residents to obtain employment opportunities. KKT will notify the village clerk as to when employment arise. KKT hereby agrees to furnish the village clerk a complete list of its employees who work at the Moonee facility. Have they done that?
They have not. They did supply a notification of their hiring program before they started, and it fell on one of our weekends of a mountain state.
KKT shall furnish the information upon the opening of the restaurant and will continue to provide such information on a quarterly basis. I understand they're not doing that.
That is correct. I've made two requests for an updated, for a list of employees that work at that facility and live in the village of Moonee. I sent two requests, email requests to that.
I move the table, this until there's time as we get this information from KKT.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, who's the second, Gray? It was the Holston tomorrow.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Orrin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item F4 on my agenda is a resolution to use more fuel tax dollars for Egyptian Trail reconstruction as it pertains to intersection design studies. Originally, a resolution came before this board, and I believe that was in the amount of excess of twenty-five thousand dollars, and that resolution was not sent into the state, and the reason being is there was a high likelihood that that was a worst-case scenario, and that there was a high likelihood that we would not be spending that amount of money. Subsequently, the required, and it's because the village didn't, we didn't have a good direction from IDOT on exactly what was going to be required. Once the traffic counts came in, and there was conversation with IDOT back and forth, the preliminary traffic study was reduced significantly, and you have the amount in front of you that was contracted or paid for that study of fifty-six hundred dollars. That's why we are, had this resolution before the board, and it's the authorization to use more fuel tax dollars as opposed to road and bridge dollars.
I think, can we, can we also clarify that the original expectation of the board was that the design study was going to be part of the process that was going to be provided by Tech Three originally?
Do you?
The design study was included in the expectations under the original quote, I recall correctly. We ended up having to pay Sam Schwartz Engineering twenty-five thousand dollar, or quoted twenty-five thousand dollars extra above and down, which actually put them higher than if we'd gone with Strand by about five thousand dollars approximately, if somebody recalled that. Now, this is an additional fifty-six hundred dollars on top of that, so- Now, this is an additional $5,600 on top of that, so.
That is not correct, sir.
Please clarify.
This is $5,600 instead of that.
So, it's.
We didn't, we did not pay the $25,000.
We're only paying $5,600. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, this is a phase one preliminary traffic study, so are we going, when we further get the engineering and further, will they have more studies or more engineering costs?
It moves into a different, to a different phase, which is controlled by IDOT, and it's phase two engineering. And yes, there, there will be other engineering costs that go along with that, but you shouldn't have to do another intersection design study.
So, this is a traffic study, not a design study though?
A design, an intersection design study was not required. A full intersection design study was not required.
So, based on the fact that a full intersection design study was unnecessary, does that mean it's gonna stay the same?
Then we can have faith.
Well, if there's not a design study necessary, does that mean the design doesn't need to change as well, or is it staying based on traffic counts? I'm not trying to read between the lines, I just want clarification on this. I know this is not relevant to whether we've had the $5,600 or not, but it is relevant long-term for what's gonna happen in that intersection of court.
Yeah, that, that is, is a, this all worked out toward that. There will be a public hearing with approved intersection, intersection design there that has been rubbed up against IDOT, or bounced off of IDOT, if you will. So, what's happened here is IDOT requires an intersection design study blankedly. Because of the traffic counts and the flow and everything, they didn't require a full-blown intersection design study. Henceforth, they have instructed the engineers to bring forth a design that is going to be acceptable with the IDOT, correct?
Yeah, so that was Gonzalez and Gray. Any further discussion on this?
Just a point of record, has nothing to do with this, by frankly, but I'll throw my plug in here. I've received three calls in the last week from citizens on the Egyptian Trail and the hot homes on the Egyptian Trail.
It's an ongoing battle, that street, which actually trustee Pop has been working on. We actually talked about that the other night, absolutely. Trustee Olson, that street, I look at, but it is a work in progress.
But it is, if we had, if I could defer to our public works superintendent just for a moment, the, this design study ultimately is going to render us a new road, you know, once we get to the phase two, et cetera?
Well, that's the reason I mentioned it, because I think we need to expedite the process.
Much as we can, we're, I think we're standing in the way of that. The engineering was delayed a little bit on the front end for phase one, but to my, to the best of my understanding, so we, help me out here, this, I believe 2015 is the target date now for the new road?
Correct, 14 starts, 15 is completion.
Okay.
And in regards to the form of Mr. Rizal, I'm glad about that, because they already did some patching here. And you don't normally patch in the winter, so they realize how bad it is. Am I correct?
Yes.
Three, three separate times on the same bus. There's a lot of traffic on that road, and school buses, sometimes trucks, whatever.
You got a bent frame on one of our police cars that probably helped a lot to get action quicker. So, there were some bad ones.
That's a joke, there is no kind of frame on police car.
Very good.
So, we have a motion in second.
Yeah, resolution 2014-1.
Okay.
Roll call?
Yes, please.
As motion was by Gonzalez, second by Gray. Trustee Raisik.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
And Pop.
Thank you. Item F5 on my agenda is board action requests regarding a TIF 3 KOP for Bailey Bridge 431 LLC. You have in your packet, the request letter, and conversations with attorney Grochowski, find the amount of $544,860.45 to be proper amount for, in accordance with redevelopment agreement.
May I clarify, is this the same property owner that refused to participate in the sound study?
It is.
Have, have they proven that they've paid the property taxes?
Yes, sir.
What other requirements do we have on the development agreement itself that would, I'm just, I just wanna make sure we've covered all of our proper bases on it legally?
I believe we have, as long as they submit proof of payment. It's a promise, I know they complied with the terms of no blocking of taxes. But when I had proof of that payment, that's how I figured out the 90%. So, as far as we can ascertain, they're current taxes, so they're, they're in compliance with respect to the terms of the note.
And we're sure that they have paid their, their current property taxes?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'm just going off of what trustee Olson brought up, I just want to clarify. Is it, is it worthwhile to review their development agreement to confirm that there's any other contingencies that we should be aware of, where we're giving them half million dollars?
I mean, if the board minds that we can't table this, I believe I will verify again that they did pay the taxes. As far as I can recall off the top of my head, my obligation was to pay the taxes, but I will confirm that.
Let's see if there's any other stipulations.
Yeah, I would like to inquire about the issue that trustee Olson brought up, but that's a separate matter.
Understood.
It's, I'm not a tax attorney, but I know from other experiences that if they have filed, it's possible that they either did not pay or that it's a receivership, and we wanna make sure we prove that before we.
We also need a beer, we're aware of contingencies, there might be as far as the, if somebody else acquires that property, does the TIF bring a go with that, you are?
That might be down low, but right now.
Like, the property you're at, there was a contingency as part of that, I believe.
Could very well be that the money would have to be paid to a judicial.
What sort of case may be?
The only concern I would have is that this was a complicated deal, and if the board recalls years ago, there was a company called Walbar who did some of the financing. And years ago, and I wrote the council that we were gonna, and if you notice, the check's not going to 431. It's going to Chicago Title. And then Chicago Title disperses funds, it's an escrow, that usually means it might be another target involved. But given the fact that this request is only roughly two weeks old, I don't think Mr. Burke or Mr. World would object if we table it for the next board meeting.
Just so we show diligence on our part too.
I'm not questioning that we owe the money, you're sure.
No, I, I don't want to have any question about that, I just, mayor Parker indicated, I just wanna make 100% sure that they paid the taxes, which I believe.
Which is an obvious contingency.
Absolutely.
So, do we have a motion to table?
Second.
Or Raisik and Horn, any further discussion on this one? Discussion, or are you just nodding your head?
I just nodded my head.
Okay.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
I trust what our attorney and our administrator say, but I feel where I know it's going, so I will say yes on this. But I might have noted that you trust that these people have paid their taxes, but you can't handle it, so you give me 100%.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Raisik.
Thank you. Item F6 on the board agenda has to do with online bill pay. This is a background as a, from the last meeting, it was passed, and some questions were asked regarding the vendors for online bill pay. I was asked to make my recommendation, and I've taken a look at, there was a question regarding our web designer and the use of.
Gateway services?
Yes, gateway services, and that has not been an issue, at least to, to my knowledge at this point. So, there are different ways to do business. If you recall, Nexus Lexus, Lexus Nexus was a flat fee for utility billing. And PSN was a, was a percentage plus a transaction fee up to $100, and then you lose the transaction fee, and it's a, it's a flat percentage of 2.75%. They had some differences in startup costs. Lexus Nexus was zero to the municipality, and depending on the selection off of the aletard menu from PSN, there were some annual costs, initial costs, and a recurring cost on a monthly basis for using the program. Additionally, PSN seemed to be the one that could supply a web-based off-site mobile operation for use. So, with that being one of the highly indicative criteria, you have my recommendation to use PSN to process the online billing. And I did suggest that the board at least consider the possibility of absorbing the fee as both of the vendors indicated to me that you have a much higher user rate if the vendor, meaning the village, at this, at this time would absorb the user fee as opposed to passing that along as a convenience fee.
My recommendation, of course, is that we keep our costs down, our overheads slim as possible, and that the convenience fee be passed on to people that are using the convenience, which doesn't seem to dissuade people in other communities. So, otherwise, we may have to incur an additional, we're already dealing with our, our costs of water and everything else is a potential increase. We don't wanna have to inflate it unnecessarily to compensate for the people that want us to cover their convenience costs. Just something to think about there, because that's another potential 3%.
My, my survey that I mentioned last month in the meeting, I meant of record, was that in the immediate area, there's every one of the villages that are doing this are passing it on to the consumer. The only ones that I saw that were not doing that were out of the area, on the western suburbs. But in this area, all the immediate area, that they pass it on to the consumer, pay for.
Question for Mr. Wallace. You said you, did you try, you tried to communicate with our web designer, he never responded? Is that what, is that your?
At the date of this printing, I had not heard back from him, is that correct?
I believe you had talked to the assistant administrator as well, but, 'cause he's been dealing with their, their, the site development and everything. And from what I understood, he said that either of them had, you know, acceptable gateways, so it wasn't gonna be significant difference on either one. So, if we had a purpose for other reasons, then to go with that. So, I'm entertaining a motion, I guess, to approve the PSN with the SVs passed on to the consumer?
Second.
No, I, I'll entertain a motion. I can, Raisik and Gray, thank you.
Discussion?
Yes, please.
Just very quickly, if we're moving forward and we get the approval, then do you have a timeline for that? When it can be completed, and then first transactions coming in?
30 to 45 days.
Let's do a roll call now, some further discussion somewhere, but not the same. So, any other discussion on that? Okay, roll call please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Horn.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Raisik.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
If.
Before you go into that, as an ancillary, if you'll take a look at the last packet, the last board meeting packet concerning this matter, you have in there the actual costs for PSN. A couple of those are elective. If any of the trustees would take a look at that, if you care one way or the other, and wanted to get back to it with me as to, yes, we'd like to have this, it's a one-time setup charge or something like that, it, it would just help with some direction, that's all, but otherwise, we'll move forward. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Well, wait, wait, wait. Probably what Mr. Administrator just said is that ID indicated 30 to 45 days, that we're gonna have to wait for us to make the decision, it's not gonna be 30 to 45 days.
I don't think a decision has to do with the general scope of our additional deployment, he's talking about other features.
Well, that's, they're gonna have to have that on the front end, am I right, Mr. Wallace?
Yes, but what I'm speaking about is a matter of by the end of the week is not gonna matter.
We'd already given the directive to the administrator at the last meeting to make a decision pertaining to these issues. This is just solidifying his, his recommendation. So, those minor details like that can be worked out as an administrative factor, but off of your contribution to the.
Obviously, I understand what you're saying too, because there are elective, you know, things.
There's gonna be a decision made.
You wanna discuss that now?
Well.
Do you have a.
Open Meeting Act, we need to make that decision in open forum and not by individual calls, emails, or phone calls.
Well, I got a problem with that, just, what are your questions, Mr. Administrator?
Well, I mean, again, Mr. Administrator, do you have a recommendation here? You've been through this package, you've recommended PSN, I would assume you have some recommendations here.
Yes, they have a one-time, a one-time fee of, excuse me, a service implementation fee, one-time fee of $99. There's a website customization fee that when you click on that link, it brings you to a different website or a different, yeah, I guess it is a different site, so that any credit card information is handled by them, because we're not PCI compliant, and they are. So, it's, do you want that design to be a mirror image of ours, of our website? If not, then that's fine, that's a $200 one-time fee, that's an optional upgrade. That was really the reference I was making at this point. We have to have a credit card terminal, and there is a $12.95 monthly fee per PSN account, that's a recurring fee.
Account in the sense of each terminal?
Us.
Yeah, there's a $99 one-time fee, there's an $89 wireless fee.
Correct.
Are we wireless?
It's only for the.
Yeah, no, no, that's a, it's a, the equipment cost is, the swipe terminal's $360 for the purchase of the equipment.
Swipe terminal would be used if people came in here and paid here?
That is correct.
Okay, and so my question would be, why would we wanna do that? Come in here to make a respite.
Well, we have other transactions, such as bill permits, you know, things of that nature.
Personnel, things like that.
So, your recommendation is that we do it?
Yes, sir. And the, the security compliance fee is an $89 annual fee.
An SCSL certificate, or what is that? Because I will leave a way to get it after we're on development.
It's the PCI certification, to, to remain PCI compliant for handling, for the handling of credit card information. So, that, that's it. I guess the real question is, has to do with the, with the link that goes to the other site. You wanted to mirror our site, or do you just wanted to go to another site?
And to mirror our site, what's it cost?
Two, two or three hundred dollars?
For the time, one-time fee, exactly.
One-time, yes, sir.
Well, or is it gonna be implemented as part of our site?
Well, I'd like to move this in along.
Yeah.
And so, I, my recommendation would be to make a decision now and.
And we can do that at a later date as well.
Will that settle this down?
No. We can, we can go ahead and move on, and it'll go to, the link will take you to a different site that is PCI compliant.
So, 30 to 45 days from now, ID and I can expect a pair of bill online. That follow under, thank you.
Regarding automatic ACH, EFT, whatever you wanna call it, the electronic fund transfers, that is something that is not specifically tied to the credit card processing. that is something that is not specifically tied to the credit card processing and that is something that would be handled through Locust, which is our database that we use in terminal. Derek, can you come forward and just tell us what you learned about that?
One of the things with Locust, we have to purchase a module, a new module to have the ability to do ACHs. The module's a thousand dollars. And then there's a, you know, they do a training and setup fee and things of that nature. Don't have a prepared sheet that I had for Locust, but that was the main cost of doing it. And to get that started, we just need to put together an authorization form in which the public can come in inside and agree to have ACH installed for their account.
And that was from the very beginning, that's one of the things I believe that the board, the previous board was expecting we're also going to implement. So I don't want to get distracted with the fact that we've got credit card options online, but those people that do recurring automatic debit from their checking accounts can do that as well. That's a different feature, a different module, if you will, through our internal database. So I know it wasn't specifically on the agenda, but can we identify and get it reaffirmed at the next meeting to give authorization to proceed with that feature set, which is something that we could have been doing probably months ago, just by implementing that feature set? It's a thousand dollars roughly, plus some peripheral training or something that they're going to...
And we will leave this Locust...
We have Locust already.
Well, we'll leave this Locust module on top of what we already have to implement in the PSN?
No. This is just for automatic debit for your checking accounts as an option. Some people like to pay their bills without ever even looking at their bills. You know, Comcast, Combed, whatever else, you know, they have it on their bankroll debit for their checking accounts, they don't want to use their credit cards. They want it to concentrate on their checking account. A lot of people pay their bills everywhere without ever writing a check, without ever doing... So that's the only way for us to facilitate that is this module for Locust. So I'm looking for a motion to perform with...
Just a motion to approve...
Oh, sorry, we didn't have a vote on the last one?
Right.
We have a motion to approve the PSN, passing the expense.
It's fine, let's go.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Now I'm undertaking a motion, we'll have to reaffirm it at the next... I don't want to reaffirm it at the next meeting, but a consensus, if you will, that you're interested in allowing the...
That's how I pay my bill, I'm interested.
Derek was to draw up some kind of plan, so he had a part of us, we...
Well, we have a special meeting next week, so we can even have a reaffirm at that point, that's fine. It's not a high priority on that regard, you know, so he can present the actual cost, he can give the idea of what it's going to cost for it. If it's going to be paid for, if it's going to be necessary. My suggestion to him was that if we do this, that we allow, without advertising, we'll work the case out with the officials, the employees, wherever they live in town and whatever, to, that are interested in doing that, let them work it out. And then we promote the credit card processing at the next venue and this ACH option at the next venue, you know, next water bill system, and we'll work all that out. But we need approval for him to spend the money on the database module.
Well, if he can prepare something by our next regular board meeting and then we can make a motion.
Okay, but the next meeting is always stipulated on the agenda.
Well, it's a special meeting for the budget.
Yeah, we have.
If it's on the agenda.
Anything that's on the agenda can be discussed in the end. Just postpone until...
Yes.
That's fine, we don't have to... I was looking for a consensus in this one, yeah.
That's fine.
That's fine, just prepare something and bring it to next week's meeting.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
That concludes my report, thank you.
I have one item, and that is we are being asked to provide a... It would be in the form of a resolution, and that is just reaffirming our our use of Chicago South Line Convention and Visitors Bureau as our visitors bureau. And they need that because of, apparently also because of state support and different things like that, they have to apply with grants and things that we're able to process back into our region. So I'm just looking for a motion to approve the acknowledgement of... Or give me authorization to sign this.
Just a question too, in the second page it says the value of being a marketing partner.
I'm sorry, say again, please.
The second page says the value of being a marketing partner. Just because the resolution says that we agree that that should be our bureau of record for the marketing and promotion of the tourism industry, the value of being a marketing partner says to me too that they're going to ask us to be as funded. How much does that cost?
We already have ordinances that stipulate the percentage of our hotel tax goes to them because they try to promote our local hotels. So there's already that ongoing expectation where this is just... I just need the form of a resolution, I guess a resolution would be a correct one to authorize me to sign this to allow them to continue to not just represent us, but to get the largest bang for the state funds that are available for our region.
Well, I think we should make a resolution.
It is nice to see when I look at the literature, I see an O D on there with our, you know, they're proudly showing our hotels and such, and that's a good thing, so.
I'll second it.
Gonzalez and then Horn. I need a resolution over that.
The vote would be for resolution twenty-fourteen dash two.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Thank you. Attorney's report?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items for the board's consideration. The first item is an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment of Court Street properties. A copy of the redevelopment agreement is before the board. If the board reviews this agreement, there are a couple provisions that need to be clarified. Basically, this is a gentleman who's supposed to build on, obviously, Court Street, the old, I guess, the police station. His funding, we asked about funding on a few occasions. And I found out this afternoon that the funding, he does not have a final funding commitment yet, partly because he's going through the SBA, which is not the easiest situation to go through. He anticipates closing on the property by the end of February. His first contract was lapsed because that happened a while ago. So at this present time, he doesn't have an outright final mortgage commitment. From a legal standpoint, I don't have a major concern with that, partly because this is what they call a page to go TIF. If he performs like he's supposed to, he'll be paid. If he doesn't perform, there's no obligation from the village's standpoint. There's no bonds being issued, we're issuing a note. And the board recalls, the gentleman came in, there were four options. We chose the option that we would pay him fifty thousand dollars a year. He got his occupancy permit, then fifty thousand a year for four years or after, for a total of two fifty. So from my perspective, if the gentleman performs, he gets paid. If he doesn't perform, the agreement for all intents and purposes, null void. But it's sort of like a catch twenty-two. If he doesn't get this commitment from the village, it appears that his funding is not questionable, but it'll help him out substantially. So he's asking us to execute this, authorize the mayor to execute the redevelopment agreement on our behalf, and also I would just amend the agreement to indicate if he doesn't close and complete the project accordingly, obviously the agreement's null void. The other thing I would feel comfortable with is that we have to give him a promissory note, just like we did four thirty-one, and we can put a stipulation in the promissory note, if he fails to comply, the notice of null void. But he doesn't have total funding, he's probably eighty percent of the way there. But again, he needs some commitment from the village so he can get his SBA along. And if I should indicate, this money that we're using, he earns money in the TIF already, and he would try to generate sales from that site, he agreed to that. He would renovate the site, it does need some renovation and repair, and he would relocate majority of his business and the village money.
So you were suggesting some modifications to this, that we see?
The only modification, because the redevelopment agreement calls for a date that he can close, and right now it's very difficult for him to do so, and he doesn't have a complete close, a completion date, because until he closes, obviously, he can't do much. I would indicate the agreement just be amended to indicate that it's subject to him closing on the property and completing in accordance with those standards.
And the date specified in the previous agreement? Or do we need to extend that from a year from the...
For financing purposes?
Yeah, whatever reason, I can confirm.
I would just sort of leave it at this present time open ended because he's got more incentive than we do. As soon as he gets the deal done, he can sign his completion.
But do we need to stipulate that it's contingent on the development agreement?
You're going to throw the... The agreement will just be amended to reflect subject to him complying with those codes.
I would like to comment, in front of each of you, there was placed a copy, it's marked H1. There was placed a copy of his commitment letter, as well as a copy of the redevelopment that was before this, I remember you stating.
I'm sure.
Larry, you should have this.
Yeah, I have it, it is... It's from Next Gen Commercial. It is read correct. It is sort of open ended, and I talked to the lender about this. And he agreed, but again, he said once the SBA approval goes through, they'll be willing to negotiate and discuss the same issues after.
I'd also point out that this has the same stipulation of a hiring agreement as did the previous one, and using local vendors wherever possible, and the same requirements as was provided for Colby's.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for doing that.
I believe that'll pretty much be the standard going forward as well.
I'll make a motion in favor of the attorney's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Holston and Gonzalez? This is the ordinance sixteen seventy-four, your honor.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Sorry, lose that number again, sir?
Sixteen seventy-four.
Thank you, your honor. The next item for the board's consideration is an ordinance authorizing the retaining of legal counsel for the fire police commission a village will need. The police commissioned that Friday to discuss the rules and regulations of their commission according to state statute. They have the right to employ counsel of their own if this board is willing to give them that authority to represent their interest. Most villages do have separate counsel. Hopefully, they'll never take place where there's a conflict, but it's a good idea to have separate counsel. They are... We scheduled a meeting February sixth. There's been a couple recommendations made to them, but this board would have to authorize the hiring of separate counsel to represent their interests. That board, strike that. The commission will give the board a budget every year for us to take a look at, but it's, you need to get, you need to give them your approval to have them retain their own counsel.
So would the, just to clarify, so would their recommendation for counsel coming through our board for final approval, or they just merely...
They would, yeah, they would make that, because there are separate boards.
They're on top, they're on top.
They're, I wouldn't say a buffer, but they operate in their own rules and regulations.
I attended that meeting as well, and I was very impressed with the way they conducted themselves. And I understand the reason why you're saying separate councils. If we would need to absorb that, probably.
Yes, they'll prepare a budget for the board to go get, and we've asked an engagement letter from counsel to give the board an idea of what the cost. They plan on meeting of leaves initially once a month. So, yeah, we'll get a budget from that every year.
Trustee Horn, they currently do have, just for record, they do have a budget currently for two thousand thirteen year, they haven't spent any money because this is their first meeting, so they'll be well under budget this year and will have to send a separate budget.
Do you recall the budget? Derek? Do you recall the budget for the...
They do have a budget, yes.
You know, the dollar amounts of the...
I do not.
Thirty-seven thousand.
Is it eighteen thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, if that sounds right.
But they'll also cover testing costs and things like that if they use a service for redeveloped stuff and it's cheap at the end. I'll see if it's a testing.
I do not, I know that the Police Association, American Star Association, they're going to create, it's just primary tests.
There'd be the crucible test, select test, all the...
If one hundred people came in and attended the preliminary meeting and wanted to test, there would be twenty-four...
Eighteen thousand dollars budget, that's ten zero.
The testing budget is ten thousand dollars, that's what I did just right now.
Larry, yes, sir?
That, those budget amounts were simply plugged in to fill space in the line item amount. I strongly urge that the, because we are in the budgeting process, that the commission try and get their arms around the actual cost of testing and so forth.
Real estate budget.
But specifically, there's five thousand dollars in there for legal fees for this year of that eighteen thousand.
But regardless, my recommendation would be they have a new council based on transitive over municipality. There's some people that, I mean, even if it was from the same firm, a lot of times I see a separate, they're trying to represent. Larry can't multiply himself in proportion, so.
Hold that.
Oh, sir? Anyway, so, do we have a motion?
I made one.
I have a second?
I'll second, I think.
I thought we were here.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Gonzalez on there?
Yeah, I didn't have anything.
Okay, so I'll undertake a motion.
Trustee Holston, second, I agree.
Very good. For this one?
That would be sixteen seventy-five. Trustee Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Pop?
That's all I have, now.
Under the officials' report, I know there's a few items that are still up in the air, so let me just see if we, we may have first one here, what are we, Trustee Pop? We're not ready for that yet?
No.
Okay.
It's a little important.
That's right. Trustee Horn, I know that there's been some discussion very recently with the chief, or do you have anything, you don't have anything?
I don't have anything else to add.
That's fine. Trustee Raisik, there's a review of the collective bargaining agreement on the police department. I know there's been some discussion with the chief as well. Do you have anything additional this time on that?
Nothing I know, sir.
What about the engine braking ordinance?
I shouldn't complete that for me.
Okay, good time.
I'm working as well.
All right. Trustee Gonzalez, prorated vehicle stickers?
I've done some, about a dozen calls, I just randomly picked some suburbs and cities, both near us and then further away, some similar to our villages and then some very dissimilar to ours. Hard pressed to actually find another village with the exception of two. Piattone and Orland Park actually are the only ones that I found with two-year stickers, of which, if we're comparing apples to apples, ours is quite high compared to theirs.
To both others?
To both, even, well, and I understand too, you know, comparing us to Piattone, in my humble opinion, did a fabulous job. They have a two-year sticker at fifty dollars. They also, the cost of the seniors is only, is thirty dollars. If a car is traded in, an unable-to-move sticker, if they're able to get a replacement sticker for only five dollars, their seniors are sixty-two and over, and they even have stickers stipulated, and there's two per household, but they even have stickers for golf carts in the village.
You're ready to tell me that, too?
So interesting, but Orland Park, two-year stickers is only thirty dollars. Same for the cost of the car and a truck, seniors are only ten dollars. And there's only a one-dollar transfer fee for the stickers. Many villages, I called four, that don't even have village stickers anymore. They have done away with the program. I know for us, you know, the difference for us being that it is, you know, a revenue generator for the village, this year's budget is over a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, but now this being the first year of the second, you know, of the two-year, that hundred and twenty... hundred and twenty-five dollars, the village will not see in two thousand and fourteen, so we have to stretch that out over two years. Um, that being said, the administrative costs, um, to either print the stickers, or in our very capable hands of our front office staff now, I think it is not an avoidant argument, so, um, I would be happy to kind of split hairs at this point, and, um, move ahead and try to find something, um, if the trustees like, um, to buy something that, with our costs that we have now for this year, although we have plenty of time to worry about it, but I think, um, all things being said, we have cost to look at it. And, you know, we've got one village very close by that has senior sticker for only five dollars.
So, but at the very least, what you're suggesting is, the second year of two-year program, we prorate the second year?
So here was interesting, and actually, like I said, the only other two that I found, well, Piattone and, um, Orland, they have the two-year stickers, they do the proration for the seniors, you know, we had that lady that asked us last year, um, what if you turn sixty-five in year two? Both villages, um, prorated the first year, so if the senior says that I'm turning sixty-five this year, they give them the senior rate for both years. But if they turn sixty-five the second year, they do not get the discount, both villages. Um, but at least they, just with, obviously with bringing in their, their driver's license, you can see which that is. And then, um, the ones that, if they buy a car halfway through, it is prorated, or if they go to, it's, um, just a one dollar or a five dollar.
So if they move the town, after the first year, it's up?
It's only half of the price.
And we have ourself that way?
Yeah, that's in our ordinance, I got a copy of that ordinance, so if somebody, but the only, i- if you, um, and our ordinance now as it stands, if you buy a car or, um, or move into the village, you only have to pay half, and that's what our village ordinance says now.
The second year.
The second year. So as of December thirty-first of this year, or after January first, um, it is only half this of the fifty dollars. And that's the only thing difference.
Do we already have that facilitated in there?
Um, yes, but not for the age factor, for the moving in, or, um, or if you buy a car, we have that stipulation in the ordinance, not by the age requirement.
So, would you like to make a recommendation for, for further discussions, pointing errors? Do we want to continue with the two-year program, or not back to one-year program?
You know what I feel about this, you know, and I, but, you know, now we are in the second year of this program, we as a board can talk about it some more, but, you know, our villages, our, our residents have already paid two-year stickers.
I understand, I'm just saying, so going forward though, because you don't want to wait till the last minute when the stickers are due, because you've got to order, you have to do all that stuff. So do you want to anticipate, not this coming year, because we're already booked into that with current stickers?
But I think we should, we got budget coming up right now, um, for, you know, moving forward, so I think that's something, if we want to, that we can, and, um, I wholeheartedly, um, very much agree that we need to go back to a one-year sticker, now that we have, like, on my, on my bill pay, and we're able to get a lot of that stuff on, done online, it won't put a burden on the office down at all, it doesn't cost anymore, probably a total of two hundred dollars or so to get these things printed, so.
Mr. Luther, what is the process for acquiring your stickers in online for you?
So...
Uh, to take to your...
Well, I, I can tell you that, you know, that it just, if you talk about the ACH or EFT, you know, that it's just something on the PSN, um, most villages are already on there, if they're using the, you know, the Citi Plus, you know, website, you can say, vehicle stickers, water payment, electric bill, water bill, it's already on there, it's just a button. It's so, it's, the mechanism is already there. So they pay, um, whoever, I don't know, Daryl, if you're going to be collecting online payments, or if it'll be Wayne, but if somebody pays vehicle sticker, guess what, they see the address and who it's paid, it gets mailed, you know, done.
The only question I have pertaining to that, it, it is a, an administrative burden, if you will, a cost by the people coming in to be reading their stickers, you know, we actually had Wayne and Michelle, I think it was, went over to the office to actually help them, you know, pre-sell some. But it also gives an opportunity to verify, do you still have this vehicle, or different things like that. Some of that can be facilitated online, some people, I, I'm not real sure what the process is going to be, because our ordinance is going to be our internal database, not the online interface so much, but I'm not real sure, Daryl, that's something you're going to have to, you will have to do your research before, maybe that expectation.
Oh, so we have, you know, we have a whole year to think about this, but...
I'm, I'm glad Daryl certainly understands, that's another thing, it's on his plate to review.
I'm leaving it in your capable hands, but I'm sure, honestly, you know, um, it's not great, great surgery, really, it's, you know, some of these may change, guess what they have home here and paid for.
Sure.
So this is something, um, I have done homework on it, and I really think we need to take a look at it, if we want to, not judge our residents or cast things on them.
Well, we, we can amend, we can amend the current ordinance to revert back to the former style if you choose, and even adjust the senior option, so that if they try to during that, you know, that's why, um, make it effective the next, now...
It's on the third floor.
Well, actually, it's June, July, whatever it is, of fifteen. So, I mean, we can, we can deal with that now, or in the near future, just at a, at a, so, if that's something you want to make a...
I think all of us, I think, if, you know, if I show everybody this too, I think everybody would, um, have a little bit of that.
Fine. You want to, you want to provide some copies of what you, your expectations, or, I mean, it, it's not an urgent thing, like I said, so if you, if you want, just wanted to, uh...
I'll bring it to the next meeting in the future.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Anybody else on your official's report?
Just to note that the past administrator Wallace asked to add the economic development plan discussion to next week's special finance meeting.
Okay. Is there any other topic specifically besides the review of current finances and budget-related items? And, uh, I will, I guess we can add the other item for, uh, ACH cost analysis and approval. Anything else specifically you guys want to have on the next week's meeting that's mostly focused around finance?
The, uh, special meeting, will you?
Yeah, because it's a special meeting, it's a mini-meeting of a whole...
I'd like to see us discuss something I mentioned months ago about our capital improvements that we need to address.
Sure.
Already borrowing money is going up, it's going to cost us more money to borrow the, the few million we need to do a water tower and bridge on the avenue and other projects. And it just seems like, I mentioned it, and, oh, you, I'd like to see us address...
I'm going to have to take DJ out of the plotline enough to get him to help me, uh, gather the information, but we're going to need some general expectations on cost for infrastructure.
I think we have that, we have that.
I know, but just brought through the next meeting as well, so.
And also our, uh, our legal standing with the seniors, I think that...
Sure.
I thought that was close to almost closure before, and that's...
Yeah, one of the members of the, of the organization that was needed, no, to, where, I think we discussed this, uh, was out of the, and out of the country, out of the state, uh, won't return until middle of February, I think it was, so, they can't do anything until they have...
I just want to see it, we'll prove it, sir.
Yeah, it hasn't been for yet. Anything else for next week's meeting? Okay. Anything on your own business that needs to be, or backup?
Yes, I'd like to bring up something too, and this is authority on our side, um, the website. Um, we hired somebody for four thousand five hundred dollars, who promised within forty-five to sixty days. I asked, in sixty days after that proposal was given to us, I was told at that November meeting, that, um, he hadn't had time to really work on it, it was sixty-five percent complete, and it should be up and running. I let it go from the December meeting, we didn't have any other meetings, so I'm bringing it up now again. Yesterday, and I called Mr. Wallace and asked him to provide me last week with the actual proposal that was given to us by Justin Tormann, um, and, and monies, I took copy of any check that was paid to Justin Tormann, because, um, in ninety days, or now, it's a hundred and twenty days, and still it is not complete, it is not sixty-five percent complete. Um, I talked to Barb Ray, um, who has now been involved with the project, and she told me about the beta site, of which I went on to the beta site, guess what, was shut down. Um, yesterday I went on to try to get onto our village of Mody website, shut down, it was back up today, um, but it is still, we look ridiculous, you know, we have stuff up there from two thousand and nine. Um, for somebody who wants to be on the up-and-coming platform and not be just a sleepy little town, we need to have this up and running, and I want it done, um, either him jerk from the project and have, you know, that young lady that gave us a beautiful proposal and a promise of something being done, um, that we hire her. We still don't even have a proposal, nobody's ever seen Justin Tormann, I want him here to tell us what he's going to do. I want him to tell us, you know, Mr. Wallace, how he's going to integrate, you know, this PMS or the PM, um, PCN part of it, yeah, the PMS, stop it. To tell us what this website is...
That was good.
Put that up. No.
So honestly, um, this is, it, it looks absolutely ridiculous for somebody, um, we talked about for months and months about, about accountability and transparency and being on the forefront of, you know, cutting technology, we look foolish, you know, there is stuff of, you know, so I have had it, and I either want something done, um, him to give back, you know, the down payment that was made, or an assurance that that will be up and running, complete, um, and we were all, you know, the trustees were even supposed to meet about what we wanted up on that website, nobody's ever seen that. And I'm calling you to task, because, and you understand why, because you understand very clearly.
True.
So unless, you know, he's coming to the next meeting, or, you know, the re- next regular scheduled meeting, and show us the progress he's made, and demonstrate it up here, I don't think he should be working on the project ever again. Do they get anything on that?
I'm a little concerned that he does not, you know, I've gotten, uh, responded for days.
Well, and that was just like, almost literally twice...
Not to pile on, but...
But just to clarify...
No, that, not even to clarify, I don't have any clarification.
No, also, also...
There's two things that were stated tonight, that even, you know, no response was given to Mr. Wallace, you know, you know, we, we have, now we don't even know if this guy exists, he has not proposed, never...
Hey, hey, he has responded to Barb on issues, has responded to me on issues. The fact that he hasn't responded to the administrator doesn't mean that he hasn't responded to the village, because he has been in direct dialogue with Barb, he has been in direct dialogue with myself.
Where's the proposal?
I don't have a proposal.
Yeah, no, you don't.
It was something that was discussed with the administrator.
Or was it?
But I'm saying it's for, as far as the progress, and I did task him with something that he was throwing in as an above and beyond, that wasn't going to be part of the cost or whatever else, we'd asked him to help out on something else, it was a collaborative tool, it was going to be added on to the system, so I personally distracted him with an add-on that he wasn't going to charge us extra for. So I will take responsibility about some of the delays, because it was my directive, requesting his assistance with something else the village could benefit from, from a collaborative calendaring feature, that frankly, failed, okay? Failed to meet my expectations, failed to meet our department's expectations, it was an add-on, he wasn't charging for it, it was a distraction, it was my deferment, my recommendation that he focus on that to get some things done for a calendaring feature that I was hoping to have out by January first, that didn't happen, we went through three or four reditions of that. I will personally take responsibility for some of the delays in this process, because I've tasked him with other things beyond the website itself. Yesterday, when they complained about the site being down, both the beta site and the current site, they asked because when I was in conversation with him, he indicated that there was going to be some server upgrades that he was performing, he asked me if it was okay for the site to be down for fifteen to thirty minutes, yesterday afternoon.
That was such a coincidence, wasn't it, that I happened to try?
You feel the need to be sarcastic with me, because I'm telling you exactly what happened.
I'm just stating the fact, you know, it is, it just seems very coincidental, and honestly, this has been...
Well, if you would have asked me, if you would have asked Barb some of these questions, I...
I asked Barb, that's not having that conversation with you?
Call it, whatever you want to call it, and I'm telling you exactly what happened yesterday, I know that for a fact, I know that other things have taken place up to this point. Okay? I understand that.
But, and you...
But some of, some of that, as I've indicated, hey, listen, call on me, and you've already called me, and I mean, I'm telling you, I'm accepting some of the responsibility for distracting, okay?
But we as a board were promised that it was going to be completely within nine days.
And I'm answering to you on the fact that I distracted him, okay? So fire me.
So, Mr. Mayer? As cool as it's prevailed, sir, is this a project that the administrator's supposed to handle, and can we allow him to handle?
If I was getting accountability out of our administrator?
Mr. Mayer?
Hold on a second. If I was getting accountability out of our administrator, and he was providing me information on a day-to-day basis about what the hell was going on around our town, I'd be more inclined to entrust the board with that kind of information. As it stands, I've deferred that to Barb Ray, our assistant administrator, so just to be clear, I would love to, no, you may not comment.
It's an inaccurate statement.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, we need to settle this down, okay? We need to settle this down, okay? Just, just, okay? The fact is, we asked for a gentleman to come in and do a job, and again, you, you stepped up and said, I pulled him away from that job to do something you wanted to be done.
True.
Okay? That being said, now either he steps up to the plate, and he shows up and says, hey, here's what I'm going to do, because, again, going back a couple of years, transparency was the big thing, and that's what the village wants, village wants to know what is going on.
Agreed.
Okay? So, that being said, let's just settle this down here, okay? We don't want to throw any words now, and again, okay? Let's move forward, we will get ahold of this gentleman, Mr. Tormann, and say, hey, okay, either we're here, or you show up at our next meeting and tell the public and officials where we stand.
Sure.
Okay? We don't need to draw this out right now. Okay? Everybody good with that?
So, if I understand you, with trustee Gray, you're saying that you'd like, and trustee Gonzalez, you'd like to have this film here?
Oh, yeah, because there, there's, again, the website, as it is moving forward, the, again, there is some stuff on there from two thousand and nine, there are pictures of kids that are almost in high school now, that are still on. Okay?
Agreed, agreed. I think we all agree on that.
Yeah, so, let's just...
We all agree we'd like to see some of that.
Correct.
Okay.
So let's just move forward with that, and let's just leave this at that, so we're not throwing words all over the place and to the public, making a mockery of the type of sitting there. Hello? Yeah, it's all... Good enough? You all good with this?
I doubt it.
I, we'll talk with you behind closed doors, huh? Anything else we'd like to add, Heidi, since you started this?
Um, none, no, as I knew too, um, from the last statement too, that Barb Ray has had some experience doing this, so I understand that she's been working on the website.
Has Michelle been on some of that recently the other day as well? Okay, anything else? Any new business?
I have some new business.
Really?
I really do. Um, we've had a, a young man, uh, who's been very, um, faithful in coming to our meetings. Uh, he never says anything, uh, he, but he's always here, records our meetings for us, uh, actually it's for WPAL, but, uh, he is, he has tendered his resignation with WPAL, and, uh, he also happens to be my son, Peter Horn, who's been doing, I think he's been, um, uh, doing this for about two and a half years, uh, so, uh, I would like to thank him for doing this, um, and, for doing this, but that also, uh, leaves a question open that we do need, uh, or PAL, I should say, needs someone to take over for him, and, um, so if you know someone who might be interested, um, yeah, I'm doing this on behalf of my, uh, WPAL, uh, please let them know, and it would be nice to have the continuity for the next, uh, meeting, have someone here. I think, I, I think it's important, um, for a couple of reasons, number one, the openness and accountability that we all ran on, of course, and also we don't get any newspaper coverage here either anymore. anymore, so.
At least not positive.
Anyways.
Good. And, and I think it's right that you're able to chew your own heart, so. Peter, thank you very much, it's much appreciated. Anything else from the officials on your, on your business? Okay. For the public, on agenda items? Okay, undertakers? I don't believe we have any reason to go to executive session at this time. It's listed on there, I bring your own one there?
I have a.
There was something on the agenda.
Uh, they're listed there as a matter of.
We, we keep, we keep that on the agenda just in case the possibility arises. We're actually going to be doing the same thing, trustee Holston, with the implication, because that was brought up kind of last minute to us, a coincidence, so we've all talked about it. So there'll be some items on there, so that if it'd be in the agenda, we may just go ahead and pass it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If there is an interest in, under litigation, I had said to be put on the last board meeting, there is an update that I'm prepared to give to the board on litigation matters, as they stand, starting off the new year. It's not pressing that it has to be this meeting, but I just wanted to make that available to you.
Without going into executive session, there's no actual regarding the executive session issues, I'll retain the motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, sack it.
Time is now eight thirty-three. Hold on, please.
On this basic, then second, second.
Right.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.